This time I'd like to call the Monday, April 18th, City of Andale Council Meeting to Order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no minutes to approve, and that brings us to Communications, Petitions, and Awards. And at this time, Mr. Wentz is going to introduce and administer the oath of office to our new Executive Assistant and Deputy Clerk of Counsel.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I'll introduce Mrs. Angela Schwartz. She is a U.S. Navy Vet and recently worked at the Montgomery County in the Development Office. She's held several roles there, and we're very excited to have her on board. Without further ado, I'll administer her oath of office.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the City of Andale.
And ordinances of the City of Andale.
And will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Executive Assistant Deputy Clerk of Counsel. Congratulations, Your Honor.
I'll welcome Ms. Schwartz. All right, and at this time, we have a proclamation to declare the month of May 2022 as Bicycle Month here in Vandalia. If I can ask Mr. Smith to step to the podium. Appreciate you joining us this evening.
My pleasure.
All right. Well, I can't think of a better time to get into cycling than right now with the gas prices seem to be on the rise. This is a perfect time to spend maybe a little bit more time riding our bikes. And it's not only good for our, for the environment, but it's also good for your health. And we appreciate everything you do with the Bicycle Committee here with the City of Vandalia. I know we started back in, what, 1995 incorporating cycling into our city, and we've come a long way. Now we've got the expansion of the bike way coming up right now. So it's an exciting time to be on the Bicycle Committee. And again, we appreciate everything you do for us in your committee. And if you'd like to say a few words.
And we appreciate the city's support of the committee. Actually, today's weather was the reason why we make May Bike Month and not April. We'll get out there soon. And we appreciate having the first mayor in my memory of Vandelia, who was a bicycling mayor. And I feel very lucky, and also lucky to have Amber's support, actually, for a few years now, supporting the Bicycle Committee, and we really appreciate that. I want to invite everybody to our next meeting, which will be actually next Monday, four o'clock in the zoning and engineering office. So, and appreciate your attending, as you have in the past, and even our city manager, and Rob has attended, and we really appreciate the support we get from the City of Vandelia. Thank you very much.
All right. I thought at first you were going to challenge all of our council members to try to ride at least 50 miles during May.
Well, not tonight, anyway.
Well, not tonight, but May. They've got all, the month of May. Bob, can you ride a two-wheeler?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, well, they might be up to it.
Okay.
All right. Well, thanks again.
Sure. My pleasure. Thank you.
I'm getting an e-bike, so.
Okay, we have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if someone would like to make a comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comments.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ryan Reed with DDC Management at 3601 Rigby Road, Miami Spur, Ohio. Thank you for having us tonight. I just wanted to talk about one of the items before you tonight, the Town Home Project. Kind of just do an overview of the project, give a little background on it. What we're proposing is 87 owner-occupied townhomes on 11.36 acres with a total open space of about 3.39 acres. A little bit about the demographic there. We anticipate this to be first-time homebuyers that are looking for lifestyle living. You know, young couples or small families that enjoy the public parks that the city already has to offer and wants to spend their time in the downtown communities. The anticipated average price for these homes is in the upper twos. When we kind of look at the overall market in Vandalia, three-bedroom, two-bath in the surrounding area, over the last 12 months was selling at about 243,000. And Vandalia on the whole, over the last two months, or 12 months, has been 247. So, these fit, you know, these are going to be above and beyond the existing inventory within the community. We believe that this plan aligns with the city's overall comprehensive plan for this piece of ground here. It's called out to be medium density, and that fits squarely in the middle of what's allowable per the future land use plan at 7.66 acres. I believe it's actually a little bit on the lower end there. And the medium density also does specifically call out townhomes. So when we look at the future use plan for this site that the city has put together, we're really in alignment with it. Additionally, we're aligned with Mulberry Road is anticipated to be a thoroughfare, and we're aligning with the thoroughfare plan for that, based on the Planning Commission and the staff recommendations to do those improvements. And that aligns with the current thoroughfare plan that's been adopted by the city. I know there's been in the past some discussions really on traffic, and the concerns around that. We've done a little homework on that and identified in some preliminary traffic counts per ODOT standards, their ODOT Trip Generation Manual, that there would be, for this particular site, a total of 30 a.m. peak hour trips and 39 trips in the p.m. peak hours. This is so little that, per ODOT standards, it wouldn't even warrant a turn lane analysis. We're actually talking, in the peak hours of traffic, one car per two minutes at that intersection. So, it's something that's very low. So we believe that adhering to the city's thoroughfare plan fits perfectly there. There's been some additional concerns about sound from the freeway. One thing I did want to clarify here is that this community does not back up to the freeway, it backs up to the Airport Access Road and not necessarily the interstate, and that if you were to zoom out or look at an aerial, that part of the existing Copperfield community also backs up to this access road and does not have a sound barrier there protecting those homes. Using the same information from ODOT, we looked at what the trip counts or the traffic counts are along that access, the Airport Access Road, and it's approximately less than 7% of what's actually on the interstate. So that, you know, the interstate is going by, and you're having upwards of 80,000 cars on a daily basis there, and this is less than 7% of that. The closest distance between a home and the edge of pavement there is approximately 150 feet. And so we feel like the things that we've put in our plan here, landscaping along that buffer area there of that 150 feet, leaving the existing tree line, putting additional plantings in, putting a fountain in, help with the feel of the community there, and give that buffer between the Airport Access Road. If we look at landscaping, we're planting trees within the community, street trees that are spaced out about 60 feet. And then we're also along Mulberry, putting in a mounding and plantings there with various trees and shade trees there, and evergreen trees. And then lastly, you know, we want to talk about the HOA. You know, this entire community is a townhome community, or plant, you know, is a townhome community, where all of those HOA spaces are maintained by the HOA and the exteriors of those townhomes to make sure that there's a standard that this community continues to live up to. Just kind of summing all of it up, I think we've presented a really good plan here that aligns with all the plans that the city has passed or plans to do for this particular, particular piece of property. Thank you for your time.
We did discuss this for probably a half hour today during our study session. There's a lot of discussion around the sound barrier and Mulberry Road as a whole, so. And giving it a lot of thought, and I don't know if anyone would like to make any comments, anything.
I have one question. Based on your business model, what is, what's the amount of years or timeframe for a tool build out?
We typically try, we have investors that supply the equity for these projects, and their timeline is in, they need, we need to be out in five to seven years from start of construction and closing on the ground to the last lot sale. This community, because it is 87 units, we think that would be in the two, two-and-a-half-year timeframe max.
There was a lot of discussion around the sound barrier and the sound walls, different options. Would you be willing to provide a sound wall or barrier that would meet the City of Vandalia's specifications?
At this, at this point, we can't, you know, that's not economically feasible for us. We've looked at some preliminary numbers. I guess my question would be, we would allow the city to install that if they were to use some type of TIF or tax abatement in order to capture that revenue, and they wanted to install that sound barrier. The existing Copperfield community has nearly the same amount of distance between some of those houses that we have and ours, and the city hasn't required a sound wall there.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please remember to state your name and address.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Mark Farnilius, 1232 Branley Court. First of all, thank you all very much for your service on the City Council here in Vandalia. Great place to live. Again, thank you very much. So, discussing the development, the PUD on Mulberry Lane there. Again, just reminding you, the three major concerns were school populations, the deterioration, the future deterioration of the property, and the subsequent increased cost to the City of Vandalia. So, on the first point, we had seen some data that the school populations in Vandalia were declining over time. Since the last City Council meeting, I've been in communication with the principal at Helkey Elementary, and unfortunately, data sometimes has nuances that don't come out at first glance. And he provided some data that shows that there's actually an increase in the school population of Helkey Elementary, which I thought was interesting, which would be located in the school where this development would be feeding, they would be feeding Helkey Elementary, and that being the target population, we would see an increase, most likely in the population of Helkey Elementary, and it is already increasing. So that is something to be considerate of when considering this decision. Granted, that could be potentially mitigated by moving students to Demet, but it is currently increasing in Helkey, and that's been over the last eight years, is what he was talking about. So, that's the first concern. The second is the deterioration of the property. So, last time I proposed requiring a brick front to prevent the deterioration of the property, since currently it's planned to be siding on the front. And so I think that that should be a major consideration, because I want to keep Vandelia an excellent place to live, and maintaining a good feel and visual decor in the properties surrounding, especially the rec center area, is very important. Third of all is the future costs that would, the city would incur. As we heard in the previous discussion, the study session, the traffic along that Airport Access Road, as well as probably 75, is going to be increasing due to multiple businesses coming in, developing there near the airport, and increasing that traffic, which is only going to increase the noise. Now, to address the point that Copperfield also is in that area, while true, Copperfield is much further north of the freeway of 75, or 70, sorry, of 70 than this development would be. Also, with how Copperfield is situated, you only have a corner of Copperfield touching the Airport Access Road, which is on a diagonal going from the southeast to the northwest. So, while, I don't think it's completely accurate to say that Copperfield is in a similar situation, because this development would lie right along the Airport Access Road, whereas only the pond in the Copperfield neighborhood really lies along the Airport Access Road. So I do think there's a considerable risk to the city having incurred costs. While at first, the buyer may beware and purchase the property with the current sound levels, as we know, they might not think about the increasing sound levels, and then in the future, it becoming an issue and a request for the City Council to then put in a sound barrier or other items. So I do think that's a major item of consideration. Overall, I think this is a great use for that property. If I were putting on my short-term vision hat and looking at one to two years, I'd say, yes, go for it, fits the plan. It would be a good use of that property. But if I look out 10 years from now and put on the long-term planning hat, I don't think we're quite situated to make that decision yet. And I think, considering more the deterioration of the property, you know, maybe doing a brick face, doing a sound barrier of some sort between, whether it be a plant-based sound barrier or a wall-based sound barrier, doing that would, I think, prevent some future costs to the city. And then, again, with the increase in students in the area, I think that needs to be teased out a little bit more, because there's some nuances in the data that have just come to light. So, thank you very much, and once again, thank you for your service on the City Council.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment?
Also, on the Mulberry development.
State your name and address.
Poach Snyder, 1160 Landisville Court. I will back up right to this development. I'll say, when we moved, we moved into Copperfield nine years ago. We moved there because it had the neighborhood we were looking for, but also had the living in the country feel that we liked also. We knew at one point the field behind us could become houses. That was always a possibility. We did not know that they would become townhomes, or a possibility of becoming townhomes. And I think most of our development is opposed to this becoming townhomes. We would like it to keep the same, I don't know, housing development, you know. I don't understand why this became medium density when in the past it's been agricultural or low density. And now we've got all of Mulberry Road proposed as medium density, which Mulberry will not withstand that traffic. And I think we've talked on the points before that we don't even know if the farmland is for sale, or that any of those properties are for sale over there. So, I just don't understand why it's changed the way it did. I think our neighborhood is fine with low-density housing, to keep it on the same plan as what we have. I appreciate some of the concerns brought up before this, that you've obviously listened to some of the citizens, what they've said. One thing that I was going to say is the increased traffic in the development. Like I say, I live in the back. When I want to go north on Dixie, I go through the front, so I can catch the light. I see, like you guys said, a lot of people doing the same thing, and that'll definitely bring increased traffic in our development. I feel if there really is a need for this kind of development, aesthetically, I don't think where it's at is the best spot. I don't, I see maybe Dixie and Northwoods, those fields, or National and Peters, the fields there. It's already set up, you've got a major, two major roads, instead of one in-and-out road in our development. That's all I really have. I do thank you guys for your time and your consideration on this project.
Thanks for your comments. Is there anyone else? While he's coming to the podium, I'd also like to ask if there's anyone online watching via Zoom, if you have comments, just raise your hand.
Good evening. How's everybody doing? My name is Kenny Baumgartner. I'm at 31, or 6131 Ansberry Drive, Huber Heights. I am currently the Assistant Produce Manager at Kroger's. Recently, I have been told that they're going to transfer me to Pickwa, and I don't want to go. With that said, I have no choice, I'm going. Has occurred to me that Vandalia is grocery store poor. And I believe that Vandalia could use and support a second grocery store, and I would like to be the man who does that. I have 50 years of produce background, as well as grocery stores, pretty much my whole life. I don't know if anybody's familiar with the internet, everything Vandalia. I've got over, in my hands, 384 comments of keeping Kenny in Vandalia.
Quite a support group here in Vandalia.
Yes, and this is internet alone.
Right.
I have hundreds of other peoples coming in and wishing me luck and that type of stuff. So what I have proposed, or thinking, and I'm probably premature on everything, I would like to try to open up a grocery store my own. And I've looked at, checked out a few properties. I'm looking at the Hawks Medical Supply there on National Road. And what I'm basically asking is for help, suggestions, point me in the right direction, anything that could help me get, achieve this goal. Like I said, Vandalia is grocery store poor. There's only one grocery store in the whole city. And I think they're taking advantage of Vandalians. I think that a second grocery store is needed. I think that I could be the man who would do it. I think that if nothing else, it would help drive down prices. Competition creates better prices for everybody. Other than that, I thank you for your time. I have a copy of all the comments, if anybody would like to see them. Sorry. Other than that, thank you very much.
Well, I've certainly followed your story on Facebook, and that's why I said you definitely have a lot of support here. What I would recommend you do is maybe contact Mr. Wentz, our city manager, and, you know, look at some economic development ideas, and how we might be able to bring this to fruition.
All righty.
Sorry about that. We'd be happy to work with you. We certainly try to support all of our entrepreneurs in town, and likewise, we agree that the city would benefit from having other grocery shopping options within town. And, you know, I would also be fully transparent and read into the record that we've worked with individual chains on specific places. So, that's something that we're looking at in all directions, and we'd love to work with you on that as well, sir.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Again, I appreciate your time. Anybody want to see this, or?
All right. Well, thanks for coming. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment, either here or online? Moving on, we'll go on to the city manager's report, where I don't see any information items or action items unless Mr. Wentz has something.
None at this time, Your Honor.
Okay. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of the night, that being Resolution 22-R-36. Mr. McDonald, by title only.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a letter of understanding with the United States Air and Trade Show.
Thank you. Mr. Wentz?
Thank you, Your Honor. Annually, the city enters into a letter of understanding with the U.S. Air and Trade Show. Per the terms of the letter, the city agrees to provide police and city services and direct support to the 2022 Dayton Air Show, and being held this year on July 30th and 31st. And the city will be reimbursed should services exceed $21,900.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 22-R-36.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakeslee, and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve Resolution 22-R-36 as presented. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Follick?
Yes.
Councilmember Farst?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Hertz?
Yes. The motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-37. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Pace Analytical Services, Inc., to provide EPA mandated sampling and testing of sanitary sewer discharge from various industries and bacteria testing of drinking water in the City of Vandalia for calendar years 2022 and 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Wentz.
Thank you, Your Honor. The resolution authorizes a two-year agreement with Pace Analytical Services for bacteria testing of our potable water system, as well as wastewater sampling of required sites, to meet our municipal industrial pretreatment program. In 2021, the city expended about $25,500 with Pace. The city has utilized Pace out of Englewood for several years for laboratory testing services, as does Nawa. We are able to drop off samples at Nawa when they're picked up, and they're picked up by Pace, thereby saving the city a service charge. When reviewing nearby laboratory facilities to get competitive quotes, the closest labs are located either in Dublin or Lima. Utilizing one of these facilities would require additional man-hours for delivery or additional service charges for pickup. When testing is needed for an emergency, like a water main break or boil advisory, these labs would not be as convenient. Therefore, I recommend that council authorize this two-year agreement with Pace Analytical Services for the city's potable water and wastewater sampling and testing services.
Thank you. Have a motion? Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 22-R-37 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follick, and a second by Councilman Blakeslee to approve Resolution 22-R-37 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Follick?
Yes.
Councilmember Farst?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Hertz?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-38.
A resolution establishing the infrastructure fund.
Mr. Wentz?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city has updated building fees to include a $1 per square foot infrastructure fee for commercial development. This fund will be created to track revenue and expenditures, including debt service relating to improving and maintaining public infrastructure.
Thank you. Have a motion?
We approve Resolution 22-R-38.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Aylers, and a second by Councilman Follick to approve Resolution 22-R-38. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Follick?
Yes.
Councilmember Farst?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Hertz?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have one ordinance in its first reading, that being Ordinance 22-15.
An ordinance amending the Vandalia zoning code and map to include the Vandalia-City Center overlay.
Thank you, Mr. Wentz.
Your Honor, Vandalia City Council authorized staff to initiate an application for a zoning map and text amendment. The proposed zoning code amendment is for the purpose of creating a new overlay district, the Vandalia-City Center overlay, which includes its purpose, proposed location, uses, development standards, and applicability to other existing regulations. The Planning Commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the proposed amendments to the city's zoning code and zoning map.
Thank you. Have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance 22-15, first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakeslee, and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis, that we approve Ordinance 22-15 in its first reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Farst?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Follick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Hertz?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. We have one ordinance in a second reading, that being Ordinance 22-13. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving a planned unit development, preliminary development plan, and associated zoning map change for for Copperfield towns on lands generally located at 3330 Mulberry Road.
Thank you, Mr. Wynn.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let's see here. The applicant, DDC Management, has submitted an application requesting a planned unit development, PUD preliminary plan for a single 11-acre parcel located at 330 Mulberry Road. The applicant is proposing to construct 87 owner-occupied attached townhome units in both two-unit buildings and three-unit configurations. The site, on the site with a density of eight units per acre, the proposal is consistent with the 2020 Vision Vandelia Comprehensive Plan. The Planning Commission voted four to one to recommend approval of the proposed preliminary planned unit development plan with the following conditions. One, that the Mulberry Road right-of-way is improved in accordance with City Code Section 1234.09 foxtrot on responsibility for thoroughfare improvements east of their entrance to ensure the city has infrastructure in place for future development. And also condition number two, instead of Mulberry right-of-way improvements made west of their entrance, a vegetative screen with a variety of evergreen trees along the access road ramp to better increase sound dampening for the community and surrounding areas. There were several conditions which were brought up. I would just also like to point out and clear my name in stating that, oh, let's see here. I have in your packet the school district projections and those are brought to you by grade. They do not state which schools they go through, but that was provided to me by the superintendent. And so those are the best figures that I have available to me and I'd certainly be happy to look at any other figures, but I'm not attempting to be mendacious in this sort, but this is what was provided at my request by the school superintendent.
That all?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. Since this is an ordinance in a second reading, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. That also goes for anyone listening online. If they would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, may I appoint a order? May I ask the city attorney, if this motion would be tabled, what would be the time to act upon it if indeed it can be tabled at this juncture?
It can be tabled. Typically, you would table it to the next meeting. But you could table it for two meetings or something like that.
Or?
To a time specific. Or indefinite.
Well, I mean, could you table for 90 days? Thank you. Wouldn't seem suspicious.
Well, yeah, I know, it's Robert's rules. I just wasn't too sure off the top of my head if there's, I don't believe we have any timeframe to to act on a PUD. So I think we would be able to table it for 90 days.
Given that. Your Honor, I'll move that we table Ordinance 22-13 in its second reading for a period not more than 90 days for further consideration of landscaping, sound abatement, and possible road development. Reperfections.
Have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Blakesley to table Ordinance 22-13 in its second reading for further considerations as noted. Are there any comments?
That was to table it not to exceed 90 days, correct?
Right.
Yeah, if I could make a comment. There's just some things we have to look at. And if the development does take place, that the city is ready in my opinion, mainly a road structure plan to support the development. So it's not being outright rejected. I think we just need some time. I'm personally in favor of it. I think we just need some time to get our ducks in a row to support the vote. Understood.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Pollak?
No.
Councilmember Barst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Hertz?
Yes, and the motion carries six one. And we have one emergency ordinance, that being Emergency Ordinance 22-14. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving individual assessment amounts and directing the Finance Director or her designee to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Wynn.
Thank you, Your Honor. This emergency ordinance assesses properties for delinquent accounts relating to stormwater fees, trash collection, delinquent sewer, and water.
Thank you. And since this is an emergency ordinance, we'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to make comments on this ordinance, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. And if anyone is listening online that would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Mr. McDonald?
So I just wanted to make one comment. You may notice in the exhibits are a little bit different this time around than they are last time. And that is because we are still in our ongoing work with Montgomery County. They keep changing what they want with us. So you will notice that there will be exhibits A, B, C, D, which are very similar to what we're all used to. Because we wanted to keep that. So council has all the information that council wants, but there's also going to be a Schedule I which has a year-to-date amount and some other things that the county requires. So it might be a little confusing when you see those things and I just wanted to clarify what those were.
Thank you. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance 22-14 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Pollak and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve Ordinance 22-14 as an emergency. Are there any other comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Pollak?
Yes.
Councilmember Barst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Hertz?
Yes, the motion carries seven zero. That brings us to reports from boards and commissions. We have a variance request for non-conforming use at 7615 Poe Avenue. Mr. Wynn?
The applicant, Rush Truck Centers of Ohio Incorporated, has requested an expansion of a non-conforming use. The subject property is zoned highway business per City Code Table 1218-1 on principally permitted uses in base zoning districts. The use of truck and heavy equipment sales is listed as conditionally permitted within the office industrial park and industrial zoning districts only. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted four to zero to recommend approval of the requested expansion of the non-conforming use.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve the variance expansion of non-conforming use at 7615 Poe Avenue.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Pollak to approve the variance for expansion of a non-conforming use at 7615 Poe Avenue Road. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Pollak?
Yes.
Councilmember Barst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Hertz?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Counsel, you've had an opportunity to review the Planning Commission meeting minutes of March 22nd. Are there any comments on those? And they stand approved. Next we have the March bill listing in the amount of $1,726,006.07 and a list of the March expenses over $50,000. And we also have the March purchase card detailed in the amount of $38,865.44. Comments on those? And that brings us to council comments. We'll begin tonight with Mr. McDonald.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Wynn?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilman Ayers?
I'm fine, thank you.
Councilman Pollak?
Just one and that's two. Mr. Wynn communicated with us today, but I think a lot of us got phone calls from a resident late last week just to acknowledge and thank the Division of Fire for working with that resident and finding a solution through other community partners to help eliminate that situation that he was having. So I think it goes to show, I mean, it's not something that's traditionally a city issue or problem, but I think it shows that all of our departments will reach out and help residents work through that situation. So Mr. Jacobs and the rest of the fire division, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Barst?
Just that I miss you all and wish you were here and I'm glad I wasn't there for the snow this morning, but that's all. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Councilman Blakesley?
Just to welcome Mrs. Swartz aboard and looking forward to working with you. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Woods?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
And Vice Mayor Lewis?
Not this evening.
I have no comments. We have no executive session, so this meeting is adjourned and we will resume our normal study session.